Welcome to the October 17th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Councilmember Sean Wright has our prayer and our pledge.
Please bow your heads. Thank you, Lord, for giving us the opportunity to sit up here and make the decisions on your behalf for the city of Murfreesboro. Please be with our leaders, both locally, statewide, and nationally, and be with those all around the world who we have spoken or unspoken prayers for you, Lord. Thank you, Lord, for allowing us to live in a country where we have the right to pick our leaders. And as early voting has begun, please bless those and put them out in front and let them vote on the people who they want to lead them through this next time. It's your name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We do have a birthday in the house tonight, so Austin Maxwell, happy birthday. Not going to ask how many it is, but happy birthday. And because we knew it was your birthday, we want to give you this ceremonial cup of water. Happy birthday from the council.
This is no requaliance would cherish this. It's his birthday.
And then we also have Leadership Rutherford, who's in the house tonight. So if you're Leadership Rutherford, stand up. Yeah, thank y'all for coming. We have 59 items on our agenda tonight. You're here for about three and a half hours, so y'all picked a great one to come to. Many of y'all don't know this. It used to be where Leadership Rutherford, y'all would have these cards, and you would have to come get a council member to sign the cards. And so we would joke around and not sign those until at the end of the meeting because what will inevitably happen is as soon as there's a break in the agenda, it'll be a mass exodus out of it. All right, you have, did we have anyone that signed up for public comment?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, we'll move to our consent agenda. You have nine items on your consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be removed from the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
You have minutes for the January, February 2023, October 3rd, 2024 council meetings.
So move.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, we'll move to old business. You have ordinance 24021, this is changes to the city code, chapter 33 through 73, 74, and 81. This is second and final reading.
So move. Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, we'll move to land use matters. Item 12, ordinance 20031, amending the zoning ordinance. This is regarding the airport, second and final reading. So what we do, we do have a few amendments. Matthew, do you want to update us on those?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of council. We have an amendment to this ordinance. We have substituted the airport layout plan for the language in the proposed ordinance amendment that specified that this would apply to the airport overlay district. And we think the airport layout plan is clearer, be more user-friendly, and letting people know where this particular ordinance applies. And so we don't think that's a substantial change to the ordinance, but it would require amending the ordinance first and then voting on the ordinance as amended. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, we need to get a motion on the ordinance as amended.
So move.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, we now need to vote on ordinance 24031 as amended.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, all right, we'll move to land use matters. Rezoning property along Willow Oak Trail and Robert, excuse me, Willow Oak Trail and Robert Rose Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for 6.1 acres located at the corner of Robert Rose Drive and Willow Oak Trail. It's in the Clary Park Plan Development. If you recall, Clary Park had property along Medical Center Parkway that was zoned commercial highway and gateway design overlay district. And then the residential portion of the project was zoned planned development. The applicants have come before us and requested rezoning for this 6.1 acre track to commercial highway because they've had a great demand for commercial development. And as you can tell by the amount of construction going along, going on along the frontage of the development along Medical Center Parkway, that has been a very successful element of the development for them. And they feel that there are additional hotels and other type of uses that they can attract for this development. Currently, the property, as a part of the planned development, is zoned for 65 residential units. So those 65 residential units, which included 48 townhomes and 17 detached units, would go away and be replaced with commercial development on this 6.1 acres. The property is identified in the future land use map as employment generating. Both higher density residential and commercial and retail uses are seen as secondary land uses in the employment generating land use character. So we're essentially just trading one employment generating secondary land use for another. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on September the 4th and voted to recommend its approval to the city council. Mr. Matt Taylor is in the audience today. If you have any questions for him representing the applicant, and I'll be happy to answer any questions as well before or after the public hearing.
All right, any questions? All right, we need to hold a public hearing. If you're wanting to speak, if you'll come to the podium, you'll have three minutes. If you're representing an individual, five minutes representing a group. If you'll keep all questions directed to the council, we'll get those answered at the end of the public hearing. All right, anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and will now consider on first reading ordinance 24OZ35.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, we'll move to item 14, rezoning property along North Maple Street.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. This property is located along the west side of North Maple Street, just to the east of Memorial Boulevard. It's comprised of a little bit less than four tenths of an acre. There is an old, kind of a dilapidated house on the property right now. The owner of the property, Mr. Mariar, wishes to demolish that house and build five single-family attached dwelling units on the property. To be similar to the development that is directly south of the subject property, there is a townhome development directly to the south that you can see is zoned RM16 on the map before you. The uses directly to the west along Memorial Boulevard are primarily auto sales related. There is also a barber shop and also Blue Coast Burrito as well there along Memorial Boulevard. To the east along North Maple Street are primarily single-family residential uses, although there are some multifamily and single-family residential attached uses there along North Maple Street as well. As I mentioned, the applicant wishes to build five single-family attached dwelling units. The future land use map of the Murfreesboro 2035 comprehensive plan identifies this area as kind of a transitional area of mixed use, with residential being one of the elements of mixed use. So while this isn't necessarily a vertical mixed-use product, it's exclusively residential, it provides that residential component in this transitional mixed-use area. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter in April and at that time voted to recommend deferral because there were concerns, there were some concerns about the amount of parking on site. Between April and September, the applicant went back to the drawing board and was able to identify area where he could design five more parking spaces on the property. The Planning Commission was satisfied with the changes to the plan as presented at its September the 4th meeting and at that time voted to recommend approval to the city council. We need to conduct a public hearing on this rezoning request today, and I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. And Mr. Clyde Roundtree with Huddleston Steel Engineering has a brief presentation that he would like to give you.
Mr. Roundtree.
Thank you, Matthew. Mayor McFarland, council members, my name is Clyde Roundtree, Huddleston Steel Engineering. I'd like to present to you real quickly, Maple Valley of Townhomes. As Matthew mentioned, we've been working on this for quite a while, trying to figure out the exact mix of residential that we feel like satisfy the expectations of the city, but also try to meet the expectations of our client. And we feel, we feel really happy with what we've come up with, so hopefully you'll feel the same.
All right. So as Matthew mentioned, it's five townhomes in total. Let me see, I'll get a site plan right there. So there's two in the front that are two-bedroom homes. They are basically no garages, but they front. They have decorative porches on the front towards North Maple, and in the back is the park and in the rear. As I mentioned, there's no garages on the front, two units. Part of the expectations of the overlay that we are working with, the Highland Study, was to have the homes have more of a front, look like one contiguous home. So it looks like one large home versus two individual townhomes. I'll show you that in just one minute. There's three homes in the back. There's a three-car, two, I'm sorry, one, two, three-bedroom and one two-bedroom unit in the back. And as Matthew mentioned, the primary concern was over the amount of parking. North Maple is a fairly busy connector street, and we know that on-street parking, although it's permitted in that area, it's not, it's not the best option. So we went through multiple generations to make sure there's ample guest parking for the townhome development. As Matthew mentioned, the units to the south are townhomes that are parked less intensively than we have parked. And they've, one of the neighbors came to one of our meetings, and they've, they've never had any parking problems with their, with their development. So we feel like we've amply parked and met that expectation that was presented to us by both the Planning Commission and the staff. With that in mind, these are the elevations of the homes. The bottom left corner is what I mentioned, as far as, that's the front unit. So that is two distinct townhomes, but it looks like one large home that is fitting for the character of North Maple Street. We went through a lot of generations to get that, and part of the generations of site plans that we've done was reducing this elevation a little bit smaller to allow for parallel parking on the right-hand side of this building, as shown on the site plan. The back top right corner is the rear elevation of the rear units. So they well have garages on the front, multiple roof lines, they all have kind of a stoop-covered porch, but we feel like are very attractive architecturally. So if you look at the top left corner, that's kind of the perspective, the front perspective from North Maple. There will be a privacy fence around the property as well as buffer landscaping between the adjacent properties. And on the back, the bottom right corner is the rear elevation, which, as Matthew mentioned, those are two car lots. There's a restaurant, Cody Restaurants right there as well. So that's what you'll see from Memorial, but again, that's kind of a, there's some other things in the way of that. Hamid, our client, owns both of car lots that are to the, to the west. So this property is zoned commercial highway. He would like to move it into the residential realm, knowing that he does have access to this from a commercial standpoint. That could expand the car lot, but he wants to stay with the townhome development if possible. As far as the actual townhomes themselves, they do have open space. The rear, the rear units have basically small backyards. The front units have porches that could be designated for their private open space, as is required. And then around the property, there is a solid evergreen tree line, and there's also an eight-foot privacy fence. And that was, this again, create separation from the adjacent uses and allow the residents for these townhomes to have a little bit more privacy. So with that in mind, I'll answer any questions you may have. Again, we've gone through multiple generations to get to this point. Appreciate Hamid's patience, and Holly has worked with us diligently to try to get this to a place where we feel like it could be acceptable to both the city council, Planning Commission, and the ownership as well. So with that in mind, thank you for the chance to hear about Maple 5. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
How are you handling your trash?
I'm sorry?
How are you handling your trash?
How are we handling trash? Mayor Shacklet, or Mr. Shacklet, they are in the garages. You can see them on, on the site plan. The rear units have the actual poly cart inside the garages.
The green.
Yes, sir, a little green box in the garages. And then on the front units, they're basically on adjacent edges of the, of the units. You can kind of see them on the back corner. The ones on the front, basically where the parking is in the rear, they'll have containment around them, a screen around them. But yeah, there's, there's trash on both the north and south lines of that parking.
City picks up the trash, is that what?
Yeah, if I remember, Clyde, I think we talked about this, they're rolling them to the street for city pickup, right?
That is correct.
It's not private, I think was your question, right? Private pickup or city pickup? I asked this at planning. I think you said rolling to the street.
Yes.
For city.
Do we typically pick up townhome developments like that? That's, I mean, I haven't thought about.
Yeah, we talk about that at planning a lot. Yeah, as long as the, as long as the vehicle can fit through the development, here it can't, so they have to pull it to the street.
They pick it up on Maple Street and the unit next door.
And usually at planning, we talk about how we want them to be concealed. You know, we don't want the trashcans.
When they're not on the street.
Right, when they're not on the street, yeah.
And that's consistent with the townhomes to the south, they're picked up.
That's why they do it on south.
Any questions?
I assume the intent is to sell, not turn these into rental units.
That is correct.
I think I made the motion at planning. I'm happy to make.
We need to have a.
Oh, we have to have a public hearing?
All right, anyone wishing to speak for or against, come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and will now consider on first reading ordinance 24OZ34.
Now I'll make my motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, all right, we'll move to plan of services, annexation, and zoning for property along West Ridge Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are two public hearings that go with this particular property. This is for the annexation and plan of services for approximately half of an acre located along the south side of West Ridge Drive. It's the area in the yellow on the map before you. It also includes a little bit less than a tenth of an acre of right-of-way of West Ridge Drive. Oddly enough, only about the northern half of the right-of-way of West Ridge Drive was annexed into the city, and so we are making that whole, putting all of that right-of-way into the city at that location. The plan of services is included in the agenda materials before you that shows that the city can provide services to the subject property either upon annexation or upon development. The city limits is located directly to the north and to the, to the east of the subject property, and so services are readily available in the vicinity of the, the study area. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on August the 7th and then voted to recommend its approval. One different thing this time about the annexation vote that you'll notice in the agenda, normally we have five items under an annexation and zoning. Due to recent changes in state law, we've been able to combine the annexation and the plan of services into one resolution so that you'll only have to vote on the annexation one time. Be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing, and then I'll be back up to explain the zoning after that.
That keeps me from having to explain that every single time, so I appreciate that.
It saves me some typing when I'm working on the agenda.
All right, we need to have a public hearing for the plan of services and annexation for this half-an-acre parcel. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and will now consider the plan of services and annexation, Resolution 24RPSA33.
So move.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gills Harris. I'm sorry. Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, all right, we'll move to the zoning of this half-acre simultaneous with annexation. Mr. Blama.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Alcorn has requested to have this property zoned to PRD simultaneous with annexation. Mr. Alcorn was the original applicant for the Veterans Cove Townhome Development, the PRD located directly to the east of the subject property. The Veterans Cove development is currently under construction. I believe that Mr. Alcorn is working in partner with Hensley Construction, and then Old South is ultimately building the units, Mr. Alcorn, is that correct? And so he identified this opportunity to add three additional units into the development. I think that he actually lost a unit in the, in the existing approval, and so this would recapture that unit plus add two more. The units themselves would be identical to what was approved for the property directly to the, to the east in the Veterans Cove development, so it would be an extension of the existing development. The surrounding land uses in the area are, in the unincorporated county, to the west, there are some existing duplexes along West Ridge Drive. To the north along Woodcrest, you see the intersection of Woodcrest and West Ridge. That is the Rivers Edge Single Family Residential Subdivision located within the city limits. And then the PRD where you see Soldiers On Her Drive and Suzanne Drive is the Veterans Cove Townhome Development, which is currently under construction. The comprehensive plan of the, or the future land use map from the comprehensive plan identifies the subject property in the suburban residential land use character, but it also identifies the Veterans Cove development, which is an auto-urban residential development, as suburban residential. So we believe this is likely an error in the drafting of the map and that this is actually more of a continuation of the auto-urban residential uses that are under development to the east. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on August the 7th and then voted to recommend its approval at that time. Will need to conduct a public hearing on this request tonight and then vote on first reading. I'll be happy to answer any questions. And Mr. Alcorn, the developer, and his engineer, Mr. Melson from CIA, are here if you have any questions for them.
All right, we'll need to hold a public hearing for this half-acre rezoning simultaneous with annexation. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and will now consider on first reading ordinance 24OZ33. So move for approval. Got a motion.
Second. Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, all right, we'll move to on ordinance. We've got ordinance 23030, amending the city code, chapter, excuse me, I skipped, 24032, amending the food truck ordinance. Joe.
Good evening, Mayor. This next IMR agenda is, as you said, is amending the city code regarding the food truck ordinance. The proposed amendment aims to at making the process more efficient, transparent, and helping the food truck owners be aware of the existing standards for food trucks. The proposed ordinance amendment came out of a collaboration with various internal and external stakeholders. City staff wanted to ensure that we were really working alongside a lot of the different departments that are involved inside the food truck ordinance process and that review process. And this included Murfreesboro Building and Codes Department, Fire Rescue Department, the Legal Department, Parks and Rec, as well as Murfreesboro Water Resources and the Rutherford County Health Department. City staff hosted a public outreach meeting in the city council chambers on May 6th and to present the ordinance amendment to a number of food truck owner and vendors, as well as event hosters, that people that host events regarding like Friday night market is one example, and received generally positive feedback on the, on the amendments. Having received a positive feedback from public stakeholders, the planning department then presented the proposed amendment to Planning Commission on June 19th, 2024. And at that meeting, Planning Commission reviewed this ordinance amendment and voted to recommend its approval to city council. I prepared a little presentation, won't take too long, just kind of going to go over the highlights again of this process to show, you know, really what prompted this, what was involved in it, and ultimately where we are today with that. So the reason what, the main reason what prompted this effort was because we know food truck culture is in Murfreesboro is growing. Anytime you see a gas station or a community event or something along the lines of that, there's food trucks that are present. They have continuously come to Murfreesboro, we're a growing community, and there's a lot of different cultures and groups of people that really want to support these types of vendors. And so that's something that really prompted this, is understanding how do we address these vendors with their questions, and how do we help improve that community understanding of what they're allowed to do and what they're not allowed to do? A lot of this came from, again, a lot of vendors having confusion as to what they can do. Can they put tables and chairs outside of the truck? Are they allowed to set up in grassy lots or in other locations that, that they may not be, that may be inside the city limits or a different business? And again, too, another part of it is the language barrier. We've encountered a number of different vendors who are, aren't primarily English speakers, and so we wanted to make sure that we were improving our process to reach these populations. So right now, the current process, if you go and get a food truck permit, you're required to do a number of things, and that checklist is seen here on your screen. You have to get a business license, you have to provide copies of personal documentation such as a driver's license, photos of the vehicle, automobile insurance, et cetera. And then once you have that, you go through the inspection process with Murfreesboro Fire Marshal's Office, and then as well as the Rutherford County Health Department for their review and approval. Once we receive all the documentation, you then, of course, come back to be reviewed and approved. Once planning and reviews and approves of it, it then goes on to Building and Codes for review and payment. So during this meeting, again, we wanted to, during this process, we really wanted to make sure we were understanding what all the departments review, what they are involved, what is their responsibility, what is their duty, and what did they look at? So again, we can get a clear understanding of what we can improve, what we can all understand in reaching these populations and these vendors to help them with the process. So we met in October 2023, and we then met again in December 2023. And again, it was a really great meeting to understand what fire looks at, what Parks and Rec looks at, what Building and Codes looks at, all of us able to look at that and understand what we could do to review, to improve the process. The other part of this was, again, doing research for other communities. What are other communities doing for their process? What can we do to improve ours? And we found a lot of great information from other cities on permitting and fees, education material, et cetera. So again, the goal of these proposed amendments was wanting to improve efficiency and transparency of the permitting process, wanting to be sure that people are understanding what they're required to produce and what we are reviewing. And then again, also to just help, again, community understanding of the process. I just want to say, too, that this is not a comprehensive update. This is not changing a lot of different things, but it is, again, addressing some of the gaps that we run into with specific vendors not understanding the ordinance. And again, also producing educational material for that. So these are some of the changes that are coming with this, this update, where there's going to be revisions to Section 1321 definitions, 1322 locations and hours operation, 1323 operational requirements, and 1324 mobile food service permits. On the right side of the screen, you can kind of see what some of the updates were. Again, it's not comprehensive, really, it's a lot in response to what some state law, state law that has been changed and that was passed in May of 2023. And also helping the vendors that have fallen between the gaps of they don't need to get a health permit because technically they're not preparing any food inside the vehicle. And again, just helping to update a lot of the materials and a lot of the different, a lot of the different language that is inside the standards so to ensure that it's clear and understandable. As I said previously, the Planning Department staff in conjunction with Building and Codes and Fire held an outreach meeting on May 6th. Again, received a lot of positive feedback on it and had a lot of great questions asked by vendors on the digitalization of the process, what kind of standards were there that existed, making the permit process quicker to see how we, how we look at them and whether they have to renew, and as to what is, who is required to get a permit and who is not required to get a permit. Again, having received positive feedback, Planning Department then took this to Planning Commission on June 19th. And again, Planning Commission was able to discuss with the staff and overall received general support of the proposed amendments. As I said earlier, with these proposed amendments being a minor, not a comprehensive update, but a minor update to our process and some of those things addressing the language gaps, as well as the misunderstandings sometimes that comes from the ordinance, we're looking to just amend this, to just really improve the transparency of our process and help get to those groups that really do look at this ordinance quite frequently. Staff recommended the acting of the ordinance on first reading, as Planning Commission, again, reviewed and approved this amendment during the June 19th, 2024 meeting. I'm here if you have any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Aguilera?
What was the term of the perm? When did they have to renew? Is it annual?
It is annually, so one year after they've gotten approved last time. And they would still pay the same $50 fee with that renewal.
Each year is $50?
Each year is $50, that's correct.
If there's no questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you, Joel, thanks for your hard work on this.
Yeah, it looks great, thank you, Joel.
All right, we'll move to ordinance 23O30, amending the City Code Chapter 4, alcoholic beverages. This will be first reading, and we've had lots of discussion on this at lots of our workshops. So Roman, we're ready for you to present.
We have, and I was highly tempted just to get up here and say we have for you tonight ordinance 23-O-30. I'm available for any questions.
We're perfectly fine with that.
Just to recap very quickly for the record, though, what we're looking at, Mayor and Council members. For context, we have met about this ordinance four previous times to go over a very iterative process regarding certificates of compliance, expiration dates, and just a general cleanup of the Chapter 4 for ease of efficiency formatting, consistent nomenclature, et cetera. Like I said, we've got those several provisions in there, the new things that are being added that aren't just cleanup. We're adding several provisions to the privilege tax. There are several categories that appear in state law and some that have recently been added to state law that weren't in the City Code. So this update will now include every category that is eligible for the local privilege tax. It also institutes a lottery system that we discussed at the workshop that's similar to what Clarksville does now. Certificates will be expiring every June 30th now. There's also an amortization for current certificates that are outstanding. They'll expire also on June 30th. And then any surrendered or expired certificates are not available until the next, what you can think of as an open enrollment period that'll occur after those are reported by the City Recorder's Office in July. Specifically, this ordinance does not adjust the cap. And if there are any questions, I'm available.
All right, any questions?
I'll second Jamie's motion.
All right, Jamie has a motion. Sean has a second.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Roman, I'll joke, and this has been a long discussion, and we've had a lot of, a lot of good dialogue, so thank you for your hard work in incorporating all that into this ordinance. All right, we'll move to on motion. We have the infamous Chad Gurkey with Hangar Area Planning Work Authorization.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. As you know, in 2013, we had the Airport Layout Plan approved, and in part of that plan was the area between McKnight Park and the MTSU Airport area that was designated for a development for hangars of various sizes. So right now, we're about to go out to bid for Phase 1, but we really need to do some planning for future phases as demand increases and financing of those projects come available. So we're doing a work authorization with Barge Design Services for $68,000 for some onsite planning and also some financial modeling for that, planning for the future development of that area. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer it at this time.
Any questions for Chad? We'll get a motion?
If there are none, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thanks, Chad. All right, we'll move to item 19, the Greater Nashville Regional Council Services Contract for our Special Census Verification. Mr. Travis?
Yes, good afternoon, evening, Mayor McFarland, members of council. We are in the process of conducting a special census for the city of Murfreesboro with those results needing to be finalized by the end of February for verification. Part of the state verification process is using a third-party group to audit. The Greater Nashville Regional Council is recognized as one of the groups to conduct those audits and would turn information over to them on March the 1st for them to do a 10% verification of our reported population. They've provided a contract for that service with a not-to-exceed budget of $160,019. They will actually bill us on time and materials for the time it takes for them to reach that 10% mark. I'd be glad to answer any questions about that and also just update the council on the status of the special census if you wish.
What's the, I know it's no more than 160,000, what's the potential, I guess, capture by the city on the special census in terms of potential?
The potential capture as far as the revenue projections. So currently, we're certified populations 152,769. That's what's recognized by the Boyd Center, and that's what's used by the state to calculate our portion of state shared revenues. We receive $175 per person, so the annual amount of that today is about $27 million into our city budget. Those come from several sources, gas tax, state shared revenues, and other sources. Our goal is to increase our certified population by 20,000 individuals. Since the last federal census, federal census, we have issued just over 7,600 residential permits. Doing the math on that gets us about 18,000 individuals, and we believe with migration in minus losses out, plus births over death, and knowing that we were way under reporting the population at the federal census, we feel like the 20,000 number is achievable. Our team is testing the database actually this week, and we plan to have a soft rollout of that tomorrow for some limited use for some events. And following the use of that, we'll do a hard rollout with Media Blitz and hit it hard for the next five months to try to reach that goal of 172,000. But the net, Chairman, or Vice, I'll get it right in a minute, your Councilman Maxwell, the net per year, if we do add additional 20,000 individuals, would be 3.75 million to our budget, and that would be year over year until we get an updated number at the next census.
All right, any questions?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
I was asking a question, but then I'll.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, thanks, Ms. Elson. All right, we'll move, I'm sorry.
Last time we did a special census, do you have any idea what was the difference between what it was reported and, and we did the special census and we added, wasn't it 18,000 to 20,000?
That was, yeah, that was our target. We've had a pretty consistent annual growth, we estimate of 4,000 to 5,000 people per year, and that was consistent in that time range as well, and we had conducted a special census about four years earlier. The rules changed a little bit, there was a little bit higher standards, and so we didn't quite get to the goal that we had anticipated based on earlier special census performance. And we also know from that, that the areas where we undercounted, where we had limited responses, and so we're doing targeted activities into those communities and to those demographics.
It's normally well worth the effort that we put into it.
Certainly, certainly worth the effort.
All right, thank you.
All right, we'll move to the purchase of ransom trust property at Front and Broad Streets.
Yes, Mayor, members of council, we have before you tonight the purchase of the properties along Broad Street, and there is an image up for you there showing that property at the corner of Front and Vine. This property will be impacted significantly by improvements to Broad Street and the Front and Vine intersection, very significantly, especially on the 204 South Front Street, which is known as yard sale business. That right turn will close an entrance and eliminate parking along their frontage, and so we felt like it would be a significant impact to the business. We talked to the owner about acquiring that and the 301, and since this was all held by the trust and they're a single asset trust, this is their only asset, we would take one of, one of the two active leases out of play for them, and they ask us to consider purchasing the other two as well, and we conducted an appraisal of that. That was approved by the trust to accept that appraised offer. We come back tonight before you with a purchase and sell agreement that would purchase those properties, and our financial impact on that is a total all-in cost of 5.5 million, including the customary closing and due diligence cost, and that will be funded from the general fund. I did want to share with you that we do have two active leases there. The yard sale lease is scheduled to expire in March of 2025, so a very short time left on that. It does not appear to me to have a renewal option on that. That lease yields 120,000 per year gross to the city, would lease 100, or would yield 120,000 per year gross to the city. The Captain D's lease expires in March of 2026. It does have a unilateral renewal, meaning that they can choose to renew for another five-year term, allowing that possibly to go to 2031. We propose to at least allow the lease to stay open through 2026, as we'll be conducting those road improvements over the next two to three years, and which would give that lease a time to make its, to run out. That Captain D's lease yields 55,000 gross per year, and so we would see a revenue income of that of 175,000 gross per year. There are some costs that we would incur as the owner that would take away from that revenue source. I'd be glad to answer any questions about the purchase and sell agreement or, to the extent I can, the improvements at Front and Broad and Vine.
Since we customarily don't get into the lease business, do we have someone internally, is that, are you going to be managing that, Sam, or who's going to be?
Well, the way the contract's drafted, we put Darren in that spot just as the point of notice, but between, between the Legal Department and the City Administration Department, we administer that lease and also take under advisement whether to get a third party to help us manage that.
Maybe a good idea to get a third party, not necessarily the yard sale, if that's going to, if that's going to expire in March of next year, but I don't think we're accustomed to being in the, getting calls of plumbing being stopped or up or whatever. It seems like that would be good to have a third party manage that. Maybe we could call MTSU. Apparently, they've got maybe a good resource for rental properties that we could talk to.
I always just call Brad Hennessy.
MTSU's got 50-something rental properties.
Now, 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 now.
The terms are generally triple-net, they're not straight-up triple-net, and so building, maintenance obligations do fall to the current tenants, but there is a little bit of difference in the property tax and insurance, how those are provided by the landlord and the tenants.
So when the purchase is made, we inherit the lease arrangements?
That's correct. And our opportunity is to buy out those leases, and there's not a compelling reason for them to, for us to buy them out with such a short term to go.
March 1 of next year, for sure, but I'm just thinking if they've got a renewal on the end of that Captain D's lease, I would, I wouldn't want to go another, you know, to extend beyond their 2026 is what it is, because I think
Yes.
our window of opportunity for us to do, to do something over there is shorter than what that lease might entail, so.
That's right, an additional five years, which they're entitled to by the lease, and so the question for us would be a potential buyout of the remainder of the lease.
I might just mention that when we first, I first came on council, this was something that we were looking at as a city, so you can imagine, that's been over 20 years, that we, that this has been some opportunity that we were trying to do something with this, so I appreciate everybody's efforts to get to this point, because this was, this was not, this was not an easy road to get to here.
And Bill, the vacant lot that's next to Yard Sale, I remember going to Camino in college, that was the first Camino in Murfreesboro that was on, that was on that, that property.
Yes, and we recently lost that to fire damage, and because of fire damage was so extensive, they were not entitled to rebuild without upgrading the property, and it was determined that they couldn't meet the development codes with the new build, and so they, they decided to demolish that building. And I will say that in that same timeframe, we also took properties off of the back of this for the Lidle Creek Greenway, so we've, we've already looked at these properties and purchased a portion to the center of the creek.
Any questions? This has been a long, hard, we've talked about this for two or three years now, just on these, this piece of property, so. I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Great work on this, Sam. All right, we'll move to the purchase of ammunition from Precision Delta Corporation.
Evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I have a motion before you for the approval of an ammunition purchase from Precision Delta Corporation. Council approved a contract with Precision Delta for the purchase of ammunition on September the 2nd of 2022. They are the authorized law enforcement distributor for Winchester ammunition, which is what we use. This purchase is necessary to allow MPD to maintain sufficient ammo supplies for firearms training requirements in addition to duty ammo needs. Funding for the total purchase cost of $142,271 is provided for in the department's operating expenses within the FY 25 budget. Be happy to answer any questions? Yeah?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye, thank you. All right, we'll move to the VA Pump Station Capacity Analysis Study SSR to Amendment Number 1. Valerie?
Good evening. In December of last year, we approved a study for SSR, our engineer, to study this pump station. I don't have an exhibit to show you on the screen, but it is in your packet of what this VA, or the area that this VA pump station serves. SSR has provided a draft technical report. It is currently showing that the pump station isn't pumping what it was designed to pump, and staff has requested this task order, or a task order amendment to continue to study the pump station to try and troubleshoot as to why it's not pumping as it should. So the reason this is before you tonight is the original task order was under the amount that required to come to council for approval, but with the amendment, it is now over the amount and needed council approval for a total amount of $60,745. So we would request approval of the amendment to continue to study the pump station.
Any questions?
So moved.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Oh, second. Did somebody say second?
They, we had a double motion.
Okay.
Motion, that's Kurt with the second.
I got you.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll go to item 23, question, water management platform.[1734.66]
Yes, Cadium is how.
Cadium, okay.
It's evidently from a Spanish company, so it's pronounced Cadium. It's a water management platform.
Cadium?
Cadium.
Cadium, okay.
You ruined his whole night. I'm sorry.
They should spell the Q with a K then.
Yeah.
Some pronunciation.
It's Spanish, so I can't explain it. It is a water management platform that our water treatment plant personnel will use. It helps them design unidirectional and conventional flushing of our water mains in those sequences to keep our pipes clean and our water quality, water good and fresh. It also will give us alerts for tank levels, pressure issues, water quality anomalies, and allows us to test in a virtual environment before we try something in the field. The reason that this is before you tonight is not because it needed, it was of the amount that needed council approval, but because of some international laws.
Because it's a Spanish company out of Spain, it has, the choice of law is Spain. So in order for us to enter this contract, we need council to approve us entering a contract that isn't under Tennessee jurisdiction.
Do you feel comfortable with it then?
Yes, we've looked at the risk analysis, and we feel it's fairly minimal that there would be any breach of contract that would require us to go to Spain. However, I'll volunteer if I need to go.
If there is litigation, I will represent city council in Spain. Only if it's Madrid.
Any questions?
Can we get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Valerie. All right, we'll move to item 24, Mitchell Nelson and Reeves Rogers Elementary Multi-Sport Court Installation. This is not a company in Spain.
Good evening, mayor and council. The existing tennis courts and surrounding fences at these two schools need renovation. This project will resurface the existing asphalt, replace the perimeter fencing, and the new sport tiles will be lined for pickleball, tennis, basketball, and four-square courts. These upgrades will be made through Sourcewell contracts with Sport Court of Tennessee and will provide a safe and desirable place to enjoy these sports. The total cost of the two proposals is $236,154. $126,000 of this will be funded by a project diabetes grant obtained by city schools, and the remaining $110,154 will be funded by interest earned on county shared bonds. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
How many potential pickleball courts? Two, four, six?
They're both at Tennessee and W. Tennessee.
There's two tennis courts there now. One tennis court will remain. The second court will have one pickleball court, one basketball. It'd be essentially a half-court basketball, and then the four-square court.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. You have two boarding commission appointments. You have Bob Bachelor filling the vacancy left by Julie King for the Board of Zoning Appeals. And then Greg Coley. Dee Jernigan let me know that he had served his time on the Tennis and Pickleball Commission. And, you know, y'all know Dee was chair of the Parks Recreation Commission for 20-plus years. So Dee said he had served his time, and so Greg Coley has agreed to step in on the Tennis and Pickleball Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, you have several beer permits before you.
Yes, one is for a new location for a restaurant located at 3921 Franklin Road, Suite F. And others for a new location for a nightclub and bar located at 112 South Maple Street. And one is an ownership name change for a restaurant located at 1668 Memorial Boulevard. We also have two special event beer permits for the city schools foundation for events being held November 8th and 9th. The original council communication showed November 9th and 10th. That was corrected today, though. All applicants meet our requirements, and we recommend approval pending final building and codes inspections.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Any statements to be paid?
No, sir.
All right, we have retiree medical and Medicare Part D prescription plans. This is from HR.
Yes, I'll present that tonight. That is just a renewal for the Benestar Insurance Plan for the MED retirees. This includes a rate increase of about $7,500 from last year's premiums with the estimated cost coming out to around $223,000. This is budgeted with our other retiree payments, and we recommend for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Is Matthew, Matthew, I just saw your text. Hold on, did Joel already leave?
He did.
Okay, well, yeah, okay, all right. Well, Joel's last day with the city is tomorrow, so want to thank Joel for his service.
Oh, I didn't know that.
He'll be missed. Sam?
Just have a couple of updates here. Mentioned the special census earlier. We will have staff out at some events over the weekend. I think there's an activity around the square tomorrow, Friday night, and then Farmer's Market on Saturday. And then we'll be at the STEAM event as well on Saturday. And so we'll be a soft open on our census. We'll be sending out an email to city employees, the mayor and council, and some of our other boards and commissions with a link that will allow you to enter your address and the residents at your address. So be looking for that from, it'll be coming from me for tomorrow. And then if you're out and about, you'll see some of our city employees out at some of the events. Also asking folks to go ahead and sign up. We'll be doing a hard push on that in the next few days, just assuming that the collection activities for the first couple of days go well with us. And then also mentioned the Tennessee STEAM event. If nobody else is going to announce that from council, we'll be at the Murfreesboro Airport Saturday morning at 9:00, and that runs through 1:00 PM. We'll have science, technology, engineering, arts, and math activities. It's been a popular event the last couple of years. We encourage folks to come out for that. And then we'll be cutting the ribbon on the new bridge, the River Rock Beezy Connector. We'll be cutting the ribbon on that Tuesday morning at 10:00 AM. We'll have a first drive and a first walk. And then later that day, we'll be opening that section of the bridge to the public, and that'll be connecting the River Rock, Casey Lane community into the Warrior Drive, Beezy Road community. And those are my announcements tonight. Thank you, mayor.
Is there going to be named that for Tommy Bragg?
The bridge has not been named, but the street connecting Beezy to River Rock, we named in his honor. And we'll have an unveiling of the street sign that's out there, the official street sign that's out there. And then we'll do a more formal presentation at the November 7th meeting of a commemorative street sign.
And council, next week, we also have our city council retreat that will start Thursday in Manchester. Full day Thursday, half-day on Friday. So I'm regrettably not going to be able to be at the ribbon-cutting for the Beezy Road on Tuesday. I'm out of town for work. So for many of y'all who don't know, we're not full-time. We have other jobs too, so.
Well, I wanted to say the same thing. I served with Tommy. He and Doug Young and I were elected at the same time to serve. And I just think the world of his service and his time as our mayor. I regret the fact that I have obligations with my business that I can't be there for that. But I just wanted to congratulate him for that recognition and for all those people that have made that possible.
And as Sam said, we will have, we will have Mayor Bragg November the 7th, sort of like we did for Commissioner Jones when we did his retreat, to have here, so residents can see that as well.
I won't be there. You don't work in early voting.
Good.
I'll be there.
Paper, rock, scissors on who wants to run the.
Week from tomorrow is the last Friday Night Live concert on the square. So if you have not been to one, it would be, the pilots are there, so it's going to be a good evening. And it's always fun to see all our community come out for those concerts that are on the square.
Any other business from council or staff? Again, I want to say thank you to leadership, Rutherford. We got you out in under an hour. Stay on a journey.